Complete construction. Make it a motion over the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Been awhile.
It has.
In front of the microphone.
Good evening, my name is Robert Turner, I'm a Tinkelman Architects, I'm representing KNO Storage in regards to the request for a extension to the construction on the property site.
And considering you're the applicant's representative for the first part of this, it makes sense that you were hired to work.
Correct. Just keep going through it.
So, I don't think they're gonna have a lot of questions from anyone tonight. Any comments from our consultants, or Tad? Are there any comments from the board?
No.
No.
And would anyone from the public like to speak about this application?
Where is it located?
It's, used to be PDQ Manufacturing, it's a big building, uh, the location is...
It's just south of South Cross Road on Route 9.
Yeah, 4920 Albany Post Road.
By the Vet Building.
4920 Albany Post Road.
Or Route 9.
Thank you.
Uh huh, and it's located next to Howard Minser, the Vet, there's a red...
And the gas stop.
And the gas stop.
How far is it coming? South Cross Road?
I'm sorry, you, no, no, I'm sorry, if you're gonna keep asking questions, you need to come up here. People can't hear you.
No, I just, I just wanted to know how far...
We're televised and people can't hear you ma'am, so please come up and speak to the microphone, that's all.
There's a handheld right there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just got yelled at by people from...
Terribly sorry.
No, no.
Um, I just would like to know how far is this establishment gonna be? From South Cross Road and Route 9, that corner there.
Oh, it's already there.
It's already there.
It's already there, it's, it used to be PDQ Manufacturing, and it became...
Statsburg Storage.
Statsburg Storage, and now it's KNO Storage.
But the proposal is for one additional storage.
Right.
And it's where that current, the house is, there's a house... There's a...
It's been demolished.
Right, there was a house on South Cross Road that adjoined the property in the back.
That's sort of behind the veterinarian?
Yes, oh, oh, okay.
It's kinda hidden back there, it was owned, it's part of the same parcel? And so, to expand, what he wanted to do is there'll be a new building, just on the north side of the existing building? And then there'll be some series of smaller buildings that are hidden back in the back, where the house was.
Okay, thank you very much.
Certainly. Would anyone else like to speak about this application? There being no one else, make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe we're, we have a resolution to grant the request, and this will be introduced by Mr. Oliver.
Resolution to grant extension of time to commence construction, KNO Storage of Statsburg LLC. Resolution number 2022-54, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby grants the applicant a one-year extension of time to commend substantial construction of the project as shown on the approved site plan to November 3rd, 2023, and to complete construction to November 3rd, 2024.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Turner, sorry you had to come all the way over here for this.
Not a problem. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is continued public hearing for Small O'Malley Subdivision. This is an application seeking approval for four new lots, making for a five-lot subdivision located in 148 Cream Street. This was first proposed a while back, um, we, this has been reviewed rather thoroughly. We were waiting for the completion of a new planning's turtle report, looking for suitability of habitat. Mr. Nowicki completed this report and submitted it to us, noting that there is no core habitat present, but there could be some areas for roving, and made some recommendations for some mitigation measures, including erecting turtle fencing during construction times. And let me, back over to you, Mr. Kohler.
Well, thank you for that, I appreciate that, I was gonna just mention that same fact there, so... What we've done is we've, we've taken some of those mitigation measures and we've added them onto the plan set. We've also had an opportunity to work with the Health Department a little further. They have approved the location of the well on, on Lot Number 3 to act as a test well, so we've, we've secured some proposals to drill a well and do all that work, so that'll be underway hopefully relatively shortly. The Department of Public Works came out, also cleaned out the ditch along the shoulder of Cream Street, so that's a good thing. Just for the public, we are proposing four additional lots on the, on the property, all of which will be served by a, a new shared driveway. The existing house will continue to use its existing individual driveway. And we're proposing a relatively large, open space parcel on the plan. I have to go get the acreage here, 'cause I forgot it right now. But it's, seventeen and a half of the acres will be preserved in open space, so... If you have any questions, I would be happy to try to address them.
So, first I should ask for motion to open the public hearing.
Is that motion?
Thank you, sec, thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, we have a resolution prepared tonight for secret determination, not that we've gone through the last of the DEC issues. I'll also point out that, that part of the delay in this process was also caused by a need to do a Phase 1 search to satisfy the Alwast Park Recreation and Historic Preservation. And we've looked at potential, other potential impacts, and that's why we're going to be making the resolution, passing the resolution tonight. Did everyone have a chance to see Parts 2 and 3? I hope, that Bonnie prepared?
Yes.
Thank you. So, what we're down now to are a couple of small issues. Bonnie, I believe, and Pete both have memos, they're mostly cleanup items for you, Mr. Kohler. But the two items, and they're relatively small that we're kind of down to, there's been emails going back and forth about paving of the driveway versus not paving, and the grade percentage, and then how driveways would hook up to it, so I'll open this up for discussion. Pete, do you want to kind of take the lead on this?
Well, Dan, one, one question we have for you, and maybe you need to talk to the, you know, the applicants there. Do they, do they want the common driveway to be paved, or they want, they want to go leave it as Item 4?
I, I think that they prefer, you know, rural country feel, um, but, you know, we're gonna do whatever we have to do to satisfy the town and the fire department and...
No, I mean, uh, you know, the Item 4, um, uh, the Item 4 road is fine, I, unless, unless, unless Tad... She and I had talked about it, so there are, you know, on the Common, like, drive, I think there's, I think there's some areas that are over our, what is it, 6% TAD's for paving?
It's 6%.
I'll look it up.
Whatever our percentage is, no, you don't need to go look it up. So anyway, so, you know, just because there's a couple little sections out of the whole thing, we're not gonna, we're not gonna require, like, paving. Tad, Tad brought up an interesting question to me about some of the individual drives off, off the Common Drive, I think, if I'm not mistaken, are maybe 10% in some cases. So, are a little steep, so we haven't quite figured out how that should be handled, because it's off of a Common Drive that's not paved, so, uh... I don't have a good answer yet, but I guess part of that was, you know, uh, if the applicants wanted to pave the Common Drive, then it would make sense to pave the, you know, individual drives where the, you know, where the grade was over the, you know, percentage that's required for paving. But if you, if you say that, you know, we're gonna leave it, or that you're gonna leave it as Item 4, then, you know, we'll work through the individual drives.
Okay, yeah, and there definitely are some sections on, I believe, most of those for individual driveways where we do get up to that higher percentage.
So you submitted, you submitted an, excuse me, you submitted an updated set of plans, we'll take a look at them. You know, I'll talk to Tad, we'll like coordinate with you, I don't think it's gonna be a big, big issue, we'll figure that out. So, so Michael, I think that was what, we were trying to find out whether they wanted to pave the Common Drive on their own.
And we got the answer, they prefer Item 4 for that rural feel. The other issue that's sort of big, it's again, not huge, but I want to just address these two first before I go ask the consultants for further comments, is how to demarcate the conservation easement. Tad, this was discussed last time when you weren't here, it's really your call. I know that sometimes we've had big boulders, other times we've had monuments. It's so, is, do you have a preference for this kind of area, what to do?
Something that is not easily movable?
Yeah, so, what we have here on the plat was a series of 4x4s, pressure-treated 4x4s in a concrete pier. And where it actually crossed the, the property line, we actually put concrete monuments in those. So that'll, that'll help with the surveying in the future, so that's what these are. And these are generally every 50 feet or so, it's, it's rough.
Oh wow, every 50 feet?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're proposing at this time.
That's good, that's a great proposal.
Yeah, that's... Should be a pretty, uh, it's, we're hoping it's gonna remain wooded even beyond the open space towards the lot, so...
Well, it demarcates it for sure with 50 feet.
But it, it'll be very clear at that point that nobody should be back there.
Is there any, is there any kind of like markers on them to say, you know, what?
I thought about that, but I didn't put anything, I, I thought we'd maybe get some suggestions from you all if you wanted something like that.
Have you seen anything, any kind of a little circle or something?
Yeah, exactly.
Skull and like crossbowing.
This is generally, it's over here, so...
So that's the 4x4?
Yeah, it's a 4x4 pressure-treated and within a...
A concrete base.
Concrete base, it goes 36 inches deep, so...
So, um, some of our communities, and it really comes down to what is in the easement. If this is forested, then that's not a concern, because no one's probably gonna mow over it. When we have more agricultural type, you know, situations, and they want it low to the ground, so, you know, the tractor and, and whatever can go over it, as it's plowing. But, also in our communities, typically on the top, it'll just have a round disc that'll say Conservation Easement, or it could say Towne Hyde Park Conservation Easement, you know? But, just Conservation Easement is the easiest thing to say, yeah.
How was that?
Yep.
Can you, can you send us a picture of that, or photograph of that?
Yeah, I think there's some sort of standard surveyor type you can buy, right, and then you can find things.
Trail marker.
Yeah, trail marker, Conservation Easement, something like that.
Something like that, yeah, I think we can accommodate that.
I like that idea.
What did we do on, um, Highberry in terms of, were, we didn't require them to be put in at the time before signing the plat, like, I'm thinking, here, could they be put in as part of the building permit?
They've already got building permits.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, on, um, Dan's project, could they be part...
Instead of doing it before the plat is signed?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just like, I'm just throwing it out there.
It's easier to do it before the plat is signed.
Okay, I just, I just want, so this way...
It's a good question, 'cause otherwise we have to remember to go back and check.
Yeah, that's why it's easy to do it now.
And I think we'll be doing the shared driveway.
Yeah, so you'll have a surveyor out there anyway, so...
We could probably just parlay it all into one.
So just, if you can, you know, I'll bring it up in a comment that just, we should say that it would be, uh, monument or marker to be, to be set, no, it, no, it would say "set",
Set.
Because it's gonna be set before the, before the chairman signs, signs the map, okay.
And once we have a photo of it, then we can start showing that to people, and tell them this is what we want. Yes, to be consistent. With Highberry, I just want to remind everyone that the open space there was a little funky, wrapped around the perimeter.
Right, right.
And, uh, there's actually a grade change, so you would have to fall to your death before you get down there and, you know, mow in one section, so, at any rate. But we did require markers there, I know. Okay, so, other comments, Ms. Franson?
So, some of it was just a few cleanup items, but I think the one question I had for the planning board and the applicant had to do with that small pocket, um, wetland. Right, so, it's right in front of that home, and, or, and the driveway goes along the side of it, but I think you, there's an existing stone wall there, you're gonna put a stone wall in, so that kind of, I recall the stone wall might be there.
The stone wall is there, and it's actually an old driveway cut, so when we did the, the planning board walkthrough, what we did was we ended up slightly shifting this driveway, we had it up further, a little bit, but there were a couple larger trees there, so we decided to drop it down to where the existing dirt paths were.
Right, I remember the wall, and then you looked over and you could see the, the wetland vegetation. So, my concern was that if it's that close to the house, long-term, someone's gonna basically fill it in, you know, and maybe use it for landscaping. And so, and then the other question was, well, what type of wetland is it? Because if it's literally just a depression with some phragmities in it, if it's not a quality wetland, um, then I don't know that it needs to be protected, and if it's isolated, it may not be regulated by Army Corps. But we do like to protect, you know, habitat, and you're not proposing to fill it, so...
It doesn't show here, but there is a natural drainage feature that extends south down into the tributary.
That's what I seem to recall, that's what I recalled.
Yeah, we all saw it.
And I have a funny feeling that might be why that's not showing up as isolated? Because I don't, Mike didn't actually say that it's isolated, even though that's the way it appears.
You can see this right here before the wall, this is a, this would indicate a bit of a channel coming out.
Exactly.
That's where it is, it goes to the stream that flows.
It comes down, and then this is a, a trip to the protected stream, so...
Right, so...
We've proposed to have this, uh, put into a, a deed restriction on that. So we were, we put on the plat here, proposed deed restriction, wetland to be preserved, so...
And did you talk about...
At this point, we're looking to save it.
Okay, or did you talk about somehow possibly moving the house a little bit farther back, or is it, that's not possible?
I did not show that at all right now, um, we have a little bit of room to possibly play with that. I wish this text box, this box would stop popping up here.
It's following you.
So...
So I just, I wanted to make sure that we're aware of that, of the potential, because of where it is, for it not to get protected, and how to ensure it if in fact that's what we do want to do.
Yeah, I think this elevation goes up just a little bit more here too, so we can actually, we can probably accommodate that a bit.
Maybe just shift it a tiny bit?
Yeah.
Okay, as long as that doesn't create all kinds of headaches for, you know, the septic and, and your distances and other things, it looks like you have some room.
Now, so I think I'd probably keep the well where it is though, just to maintain those separation distances, but...
Okay.
That makes sense, is you shifting this back toward the west, behind?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then just then to make sure that there's clear notes that say "to be protected" and "not filled", so that the homeowner at least knows what the intent is clearly from, if they look at the map.
Mm-huh.
So, that was my primary substantive comment. And like I said, the others are cleanups, and most of the cleanups are because of the fact that we added wetlands.
Right.
So some of those references just have to be updated.
Right, thank you. Ms. Moss, any comments?
No.
Mr. Sotera?
No.
Ms. Paladaro?
No.
You'll work with the, for the language of the notes to be added? Thank you, and the deed restriction language as well? Thank you. Let me start to my left, Ms. Weiser, any comments?
I have no comment.
Mr. Weiser?
No comment.
Ms. Dexter?
I guess I would only say that this project has definitely come a long way, and it's looking really nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Uh, nothing more to add, thank you.
And, Mr. Griscia?
Nothing.
Okay, so it seems as though we, we've resolved, you guys are gonna work on how the driveways would connect, a paved driveway to...
Right, we got...
In Item 4, and it looks as though we all agree that the method to demarcate the conservation space looks accept, beyond acceptable?
Nice.
Looks really good, and then the pocket park, pocket wetland, I should say, will be preserved through deed restrictions, as well as adding notes to the maps and shifting the house slightly west. So, well, you have, guys have not seen, reviewed the new submission thoroughly yet? Okay, then what we'll do is, um, if we adjourn this to November 16th, is that enough time for you to have reviewed it? Okay, first, we have a resolution prepared to conclude seeker, and Ms. Weiser will be introducing this one.
Resolution adopting a secret determination of significance, negative declaration. November 2nd, 2022, resolution number 20, resolution number 2021-55A, whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, if the planning board hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environment impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Just confirming for the record that everyone received the draft Parts 2 and 3, prepared.
I already said, I've already said that, that they'd already reviewed.
Thank you.
You were in La La Land there for a moment when I asked.
You went to a movie? You went to a movie?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, congratulations, this is a big step forward, and I think we'll be taking the next step pretty soon. Okay.
So we're, um, so as far as the Health Department, you, you have submitted the septic designs, and you're gonna drill the test wells, so...
Yeah, we had just a few very minor comments on the septics remaining, and then they were talking about the test well at that point, so... We're actually submitting to the Health Department formally tomorrow to just finalize all the septic comments.
So you're pretty far, so you're pretty far along with Dan.
DPW, based upon our field meeting and some stuff we got back from them...
Yep.
That they're okay, uh, with the Common Drive now where it is and all that, so... I mean, are, is, are we in, are we in a position to consider conditional?
I think we are, that's what I'm saying.
Once we work out some of the questions about the driveways, are we...
Yeah, I mean, that could be, that could be in our, I mean, if it wasn't completely resolved, that could be, that could be in our, that could be in the resolution that, okay, all right, I just...
It's always nice if we can get everything worked through some hapless conditions.
Yeah, no, 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 we will, yeah, yeah, we're gonna try.
As we know. Um, then, before I get a motion to adjourn, would any of the public, members of the public here like to speak about this application? I didn't think so, because no one's spoken so far, but one never knows, so... Make it a motion to adjourn to November 16th.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that, is that public hearing closed then?
No, it's still adjourned, it's okay, I gotcha, thank you. We, when we close, we usually act that night.
Right, okay, I gotcha, thank you.
And this can go as well.
Thanks again, have a good night.
Thank you.
See you, Dan.
The next item on the agenda is a new project, this is the first from the verbal reviewing, it's for Verizon Wireless Tower, located off the intersection of 9G and St. Andrews Road. This doesn't have an address yet, um, and this is, again, a new submission. So let Mr. Olson take it over, good to see you again.
Good to see you too, Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Scott Olson, I'm an attorney with Young Summer, I've been here before, I think I recognize just about everybody.
He's new, I think.
Yeah, I thought, okay. Uh, anyway, so, what we're proposing to do, um, it's off of, like, St. Andrews Road, we call it 40A, I guess that's the county road.
County Road 40A.
Exactly, so, we're proposing to build a new tower facility. It's a 150-foot tower, monopole that we're proposing, within 100-foot by 100-foot lease area, similar to what most every cell tower facility looks like nowadays. And it's town-owned property, we've worked out a lease with the town, they signed it and it's fully executed, and they went through the permissive referendum, um, it's part of the statute of town law, so everything's in order lease-wise. We, um, we're basically using this to provide new and improved service to Route 9G, St. Andrews Road, a couple other neighborhoods in the area. But if you can see from our, our maps and the information we provided in Exhibit 6, and you probably know, it's pretty deficient, uh, it's just not acceptable in that area, so... We came up with a solution, uh, off, straight off the bat, it was not our first solution. Our first attempt was to try to put our antennas on the, the water tank, that's on the north side of the road. Full disclosure, the water tank has AT&amp;T's antennas there. We spent many months, um, you know, chasing, chasing an agreement basically, but we were told by the Water Department in no uncertain terms, they did not want to allow any additional antennas on the water tank, or any facility on the property. We typically don't like water tanks, but where there's a water tank...
There's height.
It's co-location, and it's easier for everybody. But, and, it wasn't, you know, we made many attempts to get that done, unfortunately, it wasn't.
Do you have DCWWA water?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yes.
Do you have evidence of that discussion?
Yes, yeah. So, we moved on, and there were, unfortunately, there are no existing tall structures or towers in the area that could accommodate this, so we proposed 150-foot tower on the town-owned property. It is, and you all know better than I do, uh, the chairman informed me that that's actually a limited access road, based on when it was dedicated to the town, that was the intent. But in some of the, I think it's in the 1970s, the resolutions, it says if you cannot gain access off of Route 9G, that access shall be provided, um, from St. Andrews Road. So I think, if you just look at 9G and the, where the property is, there's no way you can get access, I...
No, I think this would just require action by the county legislature?
Yeah, we're gonna, I think we're gonna touch DPW, touch base with DPW first, and it probably would be the county legislature, so that's what we're trying to do.
And I can brief the legislators, the leadership of both sides in advance?
That would be, that would be, uh, great, thank you.
Well, we'll have to include them in our secret service.
Yeah, I think I included that, I think I have handwritten that into the EAF form. Yeah, they should definitely be included. So, anyway, again, we're just trying to provide some, uh, improved service where we have lack of service, or not, you know, acceptable service. We recognize that your town law, um, the planning board has the option to require a balloon test. Based on my prior experience, I assume that the planning board will be requiring a balloon test. So in one of the exhibits, we provided some viewshed maps and a list of, I don't know, 35, 40, I forget what it is, of federal and state properties in the area that we're proposing to analyze as part of that balloon test. Obviously, if there is any additional properties, please let us know, we'll be, you know, glad to take photos from those locations. So, hopefully that's something that we can maybe talk about tonight, how we're gonna do about that. So, that's just a summary of, of what we're trying to do, and we're happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Before I get to our consultants, I just want to point out that, um, Ms. Franson issued a very comprehensive memo today that you'll of course have to respond to. I assume you received it, I had the opportunity to read it a little bit earlier.
I have not received it, but I left 4 o'clock-ish, so I don't know when it was.
That's about when it was.
Okay, so yeah, so I'll, I'll take a look at it tomorrow.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you.
Ms. Franson, comments, I know you just issued really comprehensive ones today, but you can summarize or highlight.
Yep, I'll just highlight some of them, um, and this was also based on the comments that were raised at our, you know, pre-meeting, um, by some of the, um, planning board members as well. So, just in general, there's, the property makes reference to Metz Transfer, which is, I don't know what that means. I think it was Mr. Metz, and there was some transfer, and it came into the ownership of the town. And so I would only ask, when that happened, I don't know if it was a donation, or if it was a purchase, but were there any restrictions placed on the property, or was it supposed to be for open space, or for some other purpose like that? Because then we start to get into other issues that have to get addressed. So I just wanted to make sure we figure out sort of what, what the titles are, or how that evolved. And that, I don't think we had a copy of the deed, or at least I don't think it was in the submission package.
No.
In general, um, I think with the cell towers and with the law, it's useful to have the FAA documentation, I think there's some standard, um, submission that you make with regard to that. One of the comments that were raised is in general, the maps are mostly tightly into the lease area, and so you can't see some of the topography and whatnot around it, and in fact, on a couple of the maps, the topography even within the lease area itself is not entirely shown. So we just need a little bit more context, um, for where this is on the site. shown, so we just need a little bit more context for where this is on the site, and a little bit more information on the overall site, again, for that context. Just as a general comment, so the setbacks are, you know, a certain distance around the height, based on the height of the tower, I think plus 10%, or something to that effect, and the lease area does not include the setback areas, so I don't know what past practice has been, but it should be understood that those are setbacks to the tower, so if the town wants to do something in the future, in theory, it has to be outside those setbacks.
This is a corner lot, so we'd have two front yards setbacks.
And, yeah, and I mentioned that as well, so.
But I think that if the town were to do something, that setback that we're complying with is a tower setback, so I don't think that 169 feet setback or whatever would apply to a town use, or am I misunderstanding?
Well, I'm not sure, so that's what I'm asking, should the lease area be, you know, matching up with that tower setback area or not, and that's the question.
Okay, yeah, and I think, I'll take a look at the law and respond, I think it was just to the tower, not the lease area, but.
Okay.
We'll look at that.
Just more detail as far as the grading and tree removal in particular, because there's one map that's surveyed that does show the trees, but then in what is supposed to be the grading, I think it's more of a partial grading plan, and it's just showing a tree line and not really showing what's, I think, being X-ed out, so again, some of this is just more detail.
Sure.
There was a discussion about the layout of the driveway, because it's like a straight shot in, and the concern was that you're going to have a straight shot of view of the tower and equipment, and is it possible, and it depends on the contours, to do something a little bit more serpentine so that, you don't want to add a lot of disturbance, but maybe you're not getting that direct shot view of the base, and so that was again, a comment during pre-meeting. There was a question also whether a gate should be installed at the beginning of the driveway rather than around the equipment area in terms of people trying to access it, would it be, just be good to have a gate closer to the road?
That's a good point.
That was Cynthia's.
You know, people could get that, to discourage people from parking or driving in there, yeah. The trespassers?
We don't call them that.
AKA.
You didn't. I'm sorry.
So just Chapter 101, which is where the regulations are for the telecommunications towers, the planning board has to consider potential noise impacts, so in particular, we'll need to look at how close those residences are that are in proximity to the site itself and make sure that, you know, any kind of noise is attenuated to that, to be able to get to that, we need to have some information on the noise that may be generated by the equipment and those down the equipment area.
Yeah, I don't believe, I could be, I'll double check, I don't believe we even have a generator proposed for this. Yeah, for some reason, we're starting to not propose generators, I think we're doing battery backups now.
Okay.
So the noise is, but is non-existent.
Yeah, so just for the record, to indicate what the noise is and whether, what has to be addressed, this did come up in Blandings, Blandings Turtle did pop up like it does for most projects, there is a Blandings Turtle protocol, there is in the EAF, it notes that a vernal pool is proximate, and I don't know if that vernal pool is on the site, it's not in the lease area, but is it on the site? And to what extent was an actual review done or an analysis done, so it's, it's related to Seeker, but it's also related to, are the protocols what DEC normally accepts.
Okay.
Landscaping, there is also, again, to the extent that it might be visible from an adjoining residence, the code does call for some kind of screening, so that might be needed, but I think we have to go through this whole visibility analysis to make that determination.
Exactly, that'll shed some light on things.
Right, importantly, I think the board is taking up whether to retain a radio frequency engineer, it's usually done to show, they'll review that information.
It's the need as well as the specific height that's proposed, our engineer would establish, and we would probably use the one we had last time, who actually verified pretty quickly that there was a need and the height was actually appropriate on the one on Quaker Lane, so.
Bill Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, yeah, Mr. Johnson, and we've already spoken to him and he put in an escrow amount of $3,500 for the job.
So, okay, so that'll be good so that he can review that, getting into, you know, there were a whole series of attachments, and the site selection analysis is the one that I think we need to really look into in terms of what is supposed to be submitted, I don't know that there are waivers or not from what's supposed to be submitted, but again, you know, documented evidence, I don't recall seeing an email or something that confirmed that, for instance, Duchess County wouldn't allow it to be situated on the water tower, so it has to be more than narrative as far as that section of the code is concerned. Right, the other interesting thing is your code actually says that you're to consider all existing and approved tall structures, existing or approved telecommunication towers, and also sites, because the town code contemplated that you might actually have two cell towers on one site rather than spreading them out, so I don't know specifically if that was addressed, and I want to make sure that it was.
There are, well, we can certainly, the short answer is, I don't know if it was addressed, but I know that there are no such sites within the search area.
Okay.
But that, so if that has to be addressed, we can certainly put a few.
It's just a bit of narrative.
Exactly.
And then there is a section in your Chapter 101 that actually, I think, puts the requirement on the applicant to submit notice in writing to all the municipalities around the town of Hyde Park and the Director of Office of Emergency Management of Duchess County, so that they can then communicate whether in fact they have, I guess, applications in front of them or what's proposed, so I don't know whether that's been done yet or not.
I may have it confused, but I thought we spoke about it at the workshop pre-op meeting and I, and maybe another town said it, but I thought this town was going to do that, but again, I could be misrecollecting it.
Yeah, it says.
It's in my notes.
Yeah, yeah, "Planning board shall require an applicant who proposes a new telecommunications tower shall notify in writing the legislative body of each municipality," so I, I don't know what's been done in the past, if you want the town to send out those notices or the applicant does it with some kind of affidavit.
The applicant, we just have to have copies.
Yeah, I believe it's the applicant.
I thought so too, I'll double check my notes.
I mean, the issue here is, is that this is in a different kind of area than Quaker Lane, Quaker, Pleasant Valley on the other side of Quaker is pretty rural around there, there's not, there's no tall structures, let's be honest, not tall enough for this, this is an area though, that you're going pretty quickly into, it's a more urban area, I'll call it, because it's the border with the town of Poughkeepsie, so in this instance, I think we should make sure that this is done, just so we can cross the Ts on the, in terms of the code.
Right.
And also to, I'm not sure what the purpose of that is, unless it's to, maybe suggests that they could co-locate a mile away if it's, if the town has something.
Well, I mean, I've seen Scott and Monroe, and, you know, there was a facility that, I don't know that we were all aware of, that was being done, being constructed in Chester, or there was an application, like, very close by to another tower they were proposing, so I think it's just a way to make sure that everybody knows what's in front of each of the municipalities, because Verizon may come in with one application, ATT with another, Homeland Tower with, you know, so I don't know that everybody's coordinated in terms of understanding where new facilities are happening.
Unless it's done by county planning, when we refer these to county planning.
Yes.
That's all I can think of.
Yeah, exactly.
Because I can speak to Heather West whether they really do track this comprehensively in an area, but in terms of visibility from other towns, we did take a look, if you recall, from Gretna Road, other areas in Pleasant Valley to make sure that we weren't having negative impacts there, and we all drove around like crazy in our cars that day and discovered that we saw less than what we, far less than what we'd imagined, far, far less than what we'd imagined. Is that tower up and operating? It's up, but is it operating?
Yeah, um, yeah, it's gotta be, I mean, I don't have, it has to be.
Yes, you can actually, you can see it, just a little bit of it.
Yeah, because that was, that was built a little while ago, so it should, it should be, Verizon should have flipped the switch a while.
My calls still drop in that area of Cremelbo.
No, really?
Sorry, please continue, Bonnie.
So, so then with that was Seeker, so it appears that we did get the lease agreement that the town had resolved and did sign, so the town already entered into a lease agreement with the applicant.
And interestingly, they did the.
And they did their own seeker.
They did Seeker, but not on the actual impacts of what the lease hold would do, they bifurcated it in my opinion, they did Seeker only on the writing, the signing of the lease, which is unusual to me.
That's how I typically suggest it be done.
I'm sure you would suggest it that way. Why wouldn't you, Mr. Olson? It adheres to your, your client's benefit.
There's a good reason, there's a good reason for that.
Ideally, we would have done, not had the lease executed until after we'd done the visual assessment, so we could cap the height as needed, but so be it.
The, the reason we did that, and I'm not saying there's not a way around it, but what we've come across is we have to have a legal interest to actually be before this board, we have to have a lease, I mean, that's just the, the black letter law, now, every town doesn't apply it that way, but I've been kicked out of zoning before and they said, no, your lease isn't signed, they said, I know, but.
Owner's consent.
The applicant would be the supervisor, that's all.
That's, that can be used, but, I know, but we just, we like to get the lease done, because I've also been in situations where we, and it's been with the municipalities, we, one municipality said, we're not signing the lease, go to zoning, and we went through zoning, and actually it was in, it was in Monroe.
Really?
Had nothing to do with you.
Thank you.
And so you may or may not know the municipality, and we came back to them and said, yeah, we're all done, said, yeah, we don't want to do the lease now and we want to, or we want more money, we want this, and we said, we can't be put through that, and so I, I hear what you're saying, I'm just saying, we did it for a reason, maybe it wasn't the most perfect reason.
No, no, it's just unusual for us because we're usually lead agency for any of the, the town board's not really trained to do all the impact assessment that we've been doing, so.
Yeah.
Right.
But it's also, as I, we've discussed before amongst ourselves, it was really, again, interesting to go through the Quaker Lane site application process because we only had one person complain, others were in favor of this because they want to have cellphone service, particularly during COVID when kids needed to have internet access everywhere, and a lot of kids do it on this through their cellphone stuff, they don't button, it's like plug into the internet, so that's, and I think that all of us sitting up here are very interested in making sure that our residents can have good access to cellphone service, particularly because of so much of the internet work being done on it now, Bonnie, continue, please.
I was just gonna say, so, you know, it's, I understand, so it happened, usually also a reason you'd want it to wait is that there may be some adjustment that happens from doing the actual analyses, where now the lease shifts from here to here, you know, cell goes up or down, so that's why it'd be good to wait, but that didn't happen, so with that, I think you need to decide whether you will coordinate your review with all the other agencies that may be involved.
We will.
Okay.
And I'm gonna recommend we send it back to the town board.
Absolutely.
In case there are any lease adjustments that need to be.
And, and I think there are some comments, I didn't go into all of them, that really probably do need the town board's opinion because it is town land, so for instance, the reclamation plan, it shows a whole bunch of trees in there, who knows what the town wants to do with the property, but I think they should probably weigh in, you know, at that point, there were some comments on the EAF minor, the one in particular was, I think the EAF said the depth of bedrock was seven feet or so, the soils are actually very rocky and it says the depth of bedrock is 10 to 20 inches, 10 to 40 inches, so I don't know that you did geotech, but I don't know whether you have to at all do rock removal, so that's really what I wanted to point out there, they will?
Yeah, typically, typically the geotech, because of the cost, is not done until after the approvals are obtained.
Okay.
That's, at least that's how the industry does it.
Okay, then again, just want to know where that wetland is because it did pop up in the EAF.
You mean the seasonal or vernal pool?
The vernal pool, yeah, definitely, and it actually identified it as a vernal pool. And so then, really, the big ticket item is the visual impact analysis, which has to be done, and there is a great publication that in fact, I think was in Mr. Johnson's letter, but that link wasn't working, so I did provide the updated link to it, but that was a publication that was prepared with New York State Department of State about the visual, you know.
Is that DEC or Department of State?
I think it was Department of State, this one.
I know DEC has a visual mitigation.
They have their visual impact mitigation, this was specific to wireless facilities.
Okay, DEC was not.
Yeah, I think it was Town of Pittsburgh and Department of State, so again, I just recited what specifically the law says, Chapter 101, so we do have to get to that point of doing the zone of visibility map, in the maps that were submitted, they indicated it was a photo log, but there weren't photos in my submission, and I think those points where you did the photo log should actually be on the visibility map, so we see where they are relative to where you're saying on and off, you know, with topography, I think, and then with leaf consideration and tree consideration, how it reduces potential areas of visibility, I think those need to be shown right on that map.
Yeah, we can do that.
And, and then it's a matter of, you know, the, the planning board deciding if it wants to do the balloon test, which we would recommend, because there's nothing like seeing it up and getting a sense of height.
This will be John's first time to have to go driving around taking a look at the cellphone tower balloons.
And then based on that, everything flows from that, whether it needs to be camouflaged, what else you might need.
It is the big ticket item.
Exactly, and there is, just for information, the one interesting part about the EAF is in your, in your own, in your own Seeker, environmental reviews chapter of the code, it says, "Facilities, developments or projects having an adverse impact on any historic building structure or site listed on National Register Historic Places or the statewide inventory of historic and cultural resources becomes a type one action." So in theory, if this was visible and was impactful, it could be a type one, having said that, you have a full EAF in front of you and you're coordinating, which are really the implications of a type one, so you're covered, but it was interesting that that's there, that we should all remember that, and that's it, thank you.
Ms. Moss, any comments? We should just give you the walk-around mic.
I just had two things, one is, I noticed, like you said, there's no generator proposed, that it's a battery backup, we'll need details on the type of battery and the manufacturer and all that kind of stuff, the other thing is that there are two drawings of, I think they're of different scales, but they show the driveway access as different lengths, so we need to clarify which one is appropriate.
Okay.
Those are the only two things.
You got it.
Thank you, Tad, Mr. Zatira?
I don't have too much on this application yet, I mean, there's not, there's not too much for us, you know, to look at, we'll look at, you know, the grading and erosion control and I think, you know, most of the other items of the planning board and Bonnie's comments on this application.
Bonnie and her comments, I think three of them refer, defer to the planning board engineer, so you'll need to take a look at her memo and see those and expand those out for her, thank you. Ms. Paul Duro, any comments?
So, as you know, federal law has created a shot clock, which means you have to review this application within a reasonable period of time, I'm gonna ask that everyone get me their comments on why this application or current submission is incomplete, so we can provide the applicant with a formal notice of incompleteness, so we can toll the shot clock for a little bit while they get all of this additional information.
When you read Ms. Franzen's memo, you'll see lots of reasons why it's incomplete.
Yes.
Not administratively incomplete, these are smaller details, so.
We'll, we'll start with that, but if there's anything else, get it to me so we can get the formal letter out, you know, I agree, we need to see the deed, it comes up on parcel access as Metz transfer also, which leads me to believe that there's some type of restriction on the property, or that they have some lingering interest in the property.
You would have done a title search, didn't you, before you?
Yeah, I don't think there's a deed, but I'll double check, again, so many of these blend into, anyway.
Wait, is there a deed?
Because I think it was, because it was, because it was the way it was done with the county, I could be wrong again, I'll double check, I have title on it, there are no restrictions in terms of, you know, residential use or just town use or anything like that, no, the only restriction is that it's a, it's a restricted access.
Right, we, we've been dealing with the restricted access.
Sure.
Many applications, also, this is a question, I don't, I don't know if I missed it, Tad, but does this, why doesn't this require height variance?
Height, cellphone towers excluded from needing variances for height.
What, what section of the law is that?
I'll find it for you, but Mr. Sweet added that in specifically.
I have in, in 101.8 of the telecommunications law, it says telecommunications facility shall comply with setback. shall comply with setback and height regulations for the district. So, then there must be something else.
We'll find the other section, but you didn't get a variance for the quicker street, the quicker lane.
Yeah, so it must be in there, I'm just looking.
I believe in the regular zoning section, there's usually a height exception for church, spires, all this stuff, like towers.
It may be, in the scheduled bulk regulations, it may be an asterisk that says cellphone towers excluded, now that I think about it.
Okay, well, just something I, I just want to make sure that I put my eyes on that or we include the zoning board in our circulation.
That's it?
Oh, I mean Bonnie covered everything else.
Yes, it was a pleasure reading it this afternoon. Let me start to my right this time. Mr. Gersky, any comments?
I mean, it's just a naive question, but since it's my first exposure to a cellphone, is there some sort of like admittance from the radi, from the microwave exposure or radiation from the tower?
I can, I can address this.
Yeah, I mean, but I can, if you-
You can address it.
Actually, we, there is.
You did.
And we've given your report, it's just called a site compliance report. The federal law basically says that, look, states and local municipalities cannot regulate based upon RF emissions, as long as we demonstrate to you that we are in full compliance with FCC regulations. So, with every application we do for this, we provide a site compliance report. It's in exhibit nine of the application and it's a New York State licensed engineer who analyzes this and says, you are in full compliance. I've been doing this long enough so that, you know, I'm not an engineer, but anytime you have your antennas at a height of 150 feet, we are less than 1% of what we are legally allowed to emit. It's just, it's such, it's a very low power technology, so. So, we have that in there just for you or your engineer.
It's not a naive question because we actually have residents who've come up to us before and said, I can't be nervous, I'm going to, I'm going to die of cancer. But we looked into the law and it's actually fairly well-regulated what the amount is because it disperses this way, so it's not dropping down, so to speak. But they're, I know that they would be in compliance with that because I read that section anyway, but they're not going to propose, you're a major company, you're not proposing, that's going to get you sued.
We cannot, yeah, we can't put it on the air if it's not compliant.
But it's a good question.
We can ask for continued demonstration of compliance. But this question will come up if anyone comes to the public hearing and the board is just prohibited from considering it.
Is that it, John?
That's it.
Mr. Oliver, comments?
One comment is that I agree with Bonnie's comment regarding the Serpentine access road. I think that would be a nice addition and help mitigate some of the-
Hide the base.
Yeah, some of the visual issues that we might run into, especially in that location. And I await a balloon test.
Okay.
You know, that's the key.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dexter, yes?
I'm looking forward to learning more about this project and the balloon test. So, I guess I'm really disappointed that we couldn't use the tallest structure that we have, which is like right there.
Wait, I should add real quickly, when he first started talking to me, three years ago? Two years ago?
It was a while ago.
About needing, a need for a location over here, I said, what about the water tower? And I sent him to, at the time, the, well, still the chairman of the board who wanted it, but it was the actual government, or I shouldn't say they're not, they're not kind of government, they're an authority, but it was the directors who got back responses saying no. Because I tried myself, I thought it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. We, I contacted Mr. Dupree and said, this is odd and am I missing something? Could you assist?
I didn't understand because it's more revenue for them.
Who specifically denies that?
What, okay, what's her name?
Bridget Barclay.
Oh, Bridget, I'm sorry, the B, okay, so, yeah.
Okay, wow.
Tad, did you have your hand raised?
You know we have a new hotel going now.
Yep.
Tall structure.
Huh.
That's nowhere near approved or anything else, though, Tad. We can't make them wait on that.
There's one being built. I'm just letting you know.
Oh, you mean the one on the CIA property?
No, no.
Under construction.
Bellfield.
I mean, that's CIA, yes, the Bellfield property.
The one that's under construction, right?
That's not going to be 250 feet tall. More reason for an RF engineer, more reason for an RF engineer.
I found the section, by the way. There is, it's in bulk regulations, there's a specific-
That's what I thought, it's a card about the bulks, yep.
Asterisk on it. So, so my next question, I guess, kind of related to the water tower. The property around the water tower, is there, because not too far, I mean, maybe two miles away to the southeast, on that little ridge where the New York State Mental Hospital is, there's a water tower with the cell tower, like right next to it.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, if we have to build another tall structure, couldn't we look at, like right next to the-
There's a cell tower there?
Yeah, you can see it along Route 9G.
We're probably on, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Is that the, in Poughkeepsie, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Wait.
Oh, is that?
The one by, the old psychiatric Hudson Hospital.
It's owned by Dutchess Community-
Oh, that's the, that's the old psych center, right?
There's a smokestack there.
Yes, we actually-
Are you talking about?
No, not that, so there's a lot of old psych center. This would, this would be the one up on the hill, right next to Dutchess Community College. Oh, and there, there's a water tower and there's a few towers over there. And they're all co-located, so I mean, you're just, you only have to look at one place to see a bunch of-
This would be the side of nine, that goes back to 9G side, not the nine side where those are located. Well, closer to 9G.
Yeah, you can see it from 9G.
You can see them from nine, too.
Yes.
They're closer to 9G.
From Hyde Park in Poughkeepsie.
I'll, I'll look into it. Again, not the engineer, but I'll let our RF engineer speak to it. But when you said approximately two miles away, again, doing this for like 27 years, I've spoken to enough engineers, that's the reason why it probably wouldn't work. And I'm guessing that we're on one of those towers.
You probably are.
And so, but again, I just don't, off the top of my head, know, but I'll, we'll ask the engineer.
No, understood, I just-
Believe me.
And I'm, and I'm sure that you have looked at a lot of different options and stuff, but I'm just-
You were talking about erecting a tower next to the water tower.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Like, working on another lease agreement with whoever owns that property.
The county.
I just have to find out, I'll just find out the tower location specifically.
That's county property.
It's either county property, it could be state property or water authority property. Could be any of those.
I mean, we could be on there, too. That's the thing, I have to talk to my RF engineer to say-
It's Peregrine.
Peregrine?
It's by DCC, they're not on that.
No, where the water tower is here, the water tower in St. Andrews, who is that owned by? Peregrine?
Well, underneath it, the water tower is only on Little Peace.
Right.
And then the senior living facility owns that area around.
They've already purchased that?
I don't know.
I thought that was county still.
No, it's BBL property, is what you're actually saying. It's BBL.
But you could just as easily lease an area right there and-
I'll look at that specific area to see, again, a lot, it's very helpful, a lot of times what happens, because I don't know the network as well as they do, I go back and say, what about this? And they say, well, here, we're on that site, so that's why. But again, I don't know if that's-
We're talking about the actual water tower that they wouldn't like you to put-
On St. Andrews.
Oh, they wanted, they didn't want any part of us.
No, but right next to it to build-
No, not on their property.
At all.
Exactly.
But they don't own that, they don't own all that property. They own as much as, they own a hundred foot by a hundred foot, whatever. They don't own all that property around.
So, you're saying maybe on the adjoining property?
Yes, that's right next to it.
It's, the adjoining property is owned by a company, I think, near Albany called BBL Development?
It adjoins the National Park property now.
Ooh.
Yes.
Ooh, that's, that's a problem.
It's empty, it's empty National Park property.
Okay, and I, we'll look into that, but I also think that, again, we had a situation here where down the road, it was a town-owned property and we intentionally go to towns at times because a lot of times the towns welcome it because they would like the revenue. And this was one of those situations.
Eighteen thousand a year?
I can't tell you.
I can.
I know, I'm kidding.
Sorry, I can.
I thank you for looking into that because I just saw yet another view, looking north, and it was looking at something in Poughkeepsie. And I'm looking and I'm looking in the back and I'm like, oh, there's that water tower in Hyde Park. It just, it's just like this little white thumb that pops up in the middle of green and, I mean, I just don't want to see all these big, tall structures if we could.
No, I understand.
Group them.
Yeah, we would have loved to have put it on the water tower, but we'll look into that.
But maybe right next to the water tower, so.
So, I need to ask all three of you whether you would support us hiring an RF engineer to review all the materials that are a little more technical than what we're capable of.
Yes, please.
Chris? John?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Waters, comments to you. And yes, you can say yes to RF engineer.
Yes, I'm agreeing to that. No, just, just seconding what Tad had already spoke about with the driveway, but then you're going to address it by possibly changing the shape of the driveway anyway. So, that would clean that up.
I'll bring it back to the surveyor engineer to look at.
That would be the thing, and then what everybody else has spoke about.
Okay. I'm not familiar with the site, I should have gone there beforehand, but I don't know how wooded it is, but the plans show that it's wooded, so if we're going to carve out an access road.
Yeah, it's pretty wooded.
So, I mean, so the point is, it's only going to be a 12-foot, 15-foot access road. We'll look at it, but I don't think, it's going to be drive-by if you see it at all and so I don't think it's going to be a case where it's a glaring, oh, look at this, but I-
And then the towers themselves, this particular tower, where, is there, is there a proposal for future towers? I mean, are, is this going to go out or is this?
What we do is, we build the tower so that it is structurally capable of accommodating additional carriers if the need be. So, if we get this approved and then it's built and then AT&amp;T or T-Mobile, whomever comes and says, hey, we'd like to co-locate on here, which often happens, not always, but often, it'll be available to them to do that. Yeah, so that you don't have to have a second tower.
So, what is the, what is the range of the tower, though? Like, where would the next one be in?
It's, you know, I would leave that to the RF engineer, but we have some maps in here. It is very dependent on topography.
Topography, yep.
And intervening structures. It's, it's a very low power, so it's so site-specific. Usually, we're talking about, in this case, 700 megahertz and 2100 megahertz. Those are two very different frequencies. One travels and propagates a lot longer than the other. The 21 megahertz does not propagate long, it gets interfered with easily. Usually, you're looking at maybe a mile, mile and a half radius, give or take, depending on, you know, topography.
So, that's, that's why, you know, it's important if we can structure these together in one location and then go off of that, rather than have these popping up all over the place.
Yeah, the problem is that, and I hear what you're saying, the problem is the way this terrestrial system has started is that everyone started, you know, I've seen two, two towers next to each other, where you got one carrier and one carrier and it's like, it was done 25 years.
There's no organization, yeah, there's no-
So, it's hard, it's all based on network need. So, our needs may be slightly different than AT&amp;Ts, et cetera, you know.
T-Mobile, yeah.
It's actually almost impossible for you to try to say how far you're going to have the next one because a lot of this is also based on capacity degradation.
It is.
I read correctly your application, it says that this is actually to improve capacity again, as well as send out new signals at the 2100, I believe it is.
It is.
But I know, just speaking anecdotally, there are places now on Route 9 where I never had call drops and now I, people will disappear and I'm like, what happened? This was, this wasn't an area that was having a problem because more, more and more people are using it and now with all the cars that you can just say, hey, dial so-and-so, call so-and-so. People use cars as their offices to organize, you know, et cetera, not criticizing this.
Yeah.
I do it, too. It's just that we're all talking more and so you're going to have, the cost of that, if you want to have an effective service that doesn't drop everywhere, is you're going to need to have more of these towers ultimately.
Anecdotally, I've heard other people say, hey, we're in a really populated, well, you know, it's a, an area that's developed and I, same thing, I now drop a call at this intersection Y and so many people are using the system, most likely.
So, this is to improve capacity so you would have less, you know, call drops as you are driving or walking around or using it on your phone. Anything else, Rob? That's it. Ms. Weiser?
I think Bonnie's notes are really, really thorough and I'd like, I am looking forward to seeing the visual impact analysis. I'm sure it's a nice system.
Yes, sir. Does anyone know why we're having these strange, did you hear the sound?
Yes.
This one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's RF frequency.
Thank you.
Interference.
Capacity issue.
It is, it's RF.
So, I agree with all my colleagues' comments, which weren't that much. Basically, we should hire the RF engineer and we should require the visual impact analysis. And Bonnie, can you work, they submitted, they suggest a listing of receptor sites. And John, the receptors are where we go to take a look at what the balloons will look like. So, we would look at the historic sites because that's required in the code. When I say historic, I should say anything that's on the historic registry as well as apparently included in terms of maybe being a type one, so we need to take a look at it. Tad, do you have, I think you give a list?
Yeah, I'm thinking Top Cottage might be one of the key ones.
Because it's high up enough?
Yeah.
And it's looking down this way and all the views there look this way, not the other way?
Yeah.
Certainly, the FDR site. We can go through these offline, though.
Should we include any site on our, at Bellfield, which is now under review?
Well, St. Andrews, the CIA, the old St. Andrews Naviciat, the actual main building is also a historically listed site, so that should also be a receptor.
And it contains a cell tower.
That's right.
I think that's ours.
It does.
It is yours, it was our, it was our first cellphone tower experience.
I remember coming down here for that and visiting CIA for the first time and was amazed.
It's great because no one can see them up there. No one can see them.
Exactly.
That one was easy.
And that's why I still get great cellphone service. At any rate.
For now.
For now. So, you will contact the same people who did the last visual impact analysis for you, I'm assuming?
Yes, I was just trying to think who it was, but yes.
It'll be in our records as well.
Yeah, tectonic engineering did that.
They did the view shed, I think.
Yeah, they did the view shed, so they'll be the same folks that go out and do that.
So, we'll work together to come up with a list of receptor sites and we'll make sure that all the board members agree as to what they finally are so we don't have any last-minute ones added in. We can schedule it. Um, we can schedule it, you're pretty close to full leap-off right now.
Yeah, we're doing one Saturday, I think.
Yeah, the last four days has been.
Oh, yeah.
So the only other comment I have is that, how, when should we want to meet with them again, so that we can consider circulating, et cetera?
Uh, they need to make a new submission with some of the missing information.
I know, I will be getting comments to you, I promise.
So when, when they come back, um, we can put them on the next agenda.
Okay.
So I, I'd like, so you're gonna provide the title report, and you're gonna draft a notice, send to me for approval, that you're gonna send out to all the municipalities?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll, if you want the whole title report, I guess.
You know, we're thorough here, cross our Ts and dot our Is. Um, I think that a lot of this will become clearer when you have a chance to read Bonnie's memo.
Yeah.
It's really detailed, and I think it specifically, once you go through the corrective items needed, it'll be a complete application. I, I, Bonnie did a more detailed review than what I do, and I'm often pretty detailed. I mean, I saw a bunch of her points, I was like, ah, I got that, we got that one, I thought, oh, didn't, didn't know this, didn't know this. We don't see these applications very often, as you know, the last one was.
And they're also different.
Yes, they are.
And as I told you when we first had our offline meeting, a lot of the complications off the Quaker Lane site was because of all the grading that need to be, or the non-grading that need to be done.
Yeah.
But, you know, the.
That was an interesting access.
Yeah, it was a strange, it was a strange access, so. Um, but at any rate, you'll, with the next submission, you can have Bonnie's comment memo replied to. And if you have any, in the meantime, if you have any issues or comments or questions, just contact one of us, all of us. If you want an offline meeting again to discuss, we can do that, too.
Okay, thank you. Do we, uh, do we wanna schedule, do you wanna schedule the balloon test at all?
Generally speaking, we can do that as soon as we have the receptor sites.
Have you normally done them on the weekends or the weekdays, and do you typically notify the public?
Pretty much.
Depending on weather, but the last one we did for the Quaker Lane Tower was done on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon. It was a Saturday.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause Victoria came, um, with her children who were cutest buttons, they're probably bored.
It was in the middle of COVID.
Yeah. Yeah.
That must have just been right before me, because I don't.
It was right before you.
Twenty-twenty.
And I don't think that Rob was on, or that John was on, nothing like that. So, but yes, we, we were still able to do things, but we were more restricted on some.
We were in separate vehicles.
We were in separate vehicles. We were not carpooling, in other words.
Um, I think Bonnie's right, uh, ideally, we would have it done on a weekend, and have it run for a short number of consecutive hours, and give notice to the public, and we can, we can do the notice in such a way that it says, you know, the balloon test will run on November eleventh, or any Saturday thereafter, or the next Saturday in event of bad weather until the balloon test is held, so that the notice is wrong, and then the public can look at it and they can.
So the other thing, and that's fine, yeah, we did it on a Saturday. What we, what, a lot of municipalities that actually have something in their zoning law that says it's gotta be Saturday, usually they'll say it's gonna be a weekend, Saturday. It doesn't have to be then the next Sunday, usually they'll say, it can't be the Saturday, a Monday. So I know our folks, they don't work on Sunday.
Oh.
Yeah.
We're happy to do Saturday, and then the next Saturday, and then the next Saturday, until it's done.
Members of the board, members of the board here do work. I'm the lazy, you know, layabout.
No, I understand, and that's the point, that's the point of us, I know it's nice to see the balloons, I get it, but that's the point of, at some point, if, if we keep going Saturday after Saturday, because we're getting into winter weather and wind, and wind is really the, the problem here. So at some point, we just wanna say, we have to get it done, and the whole point of having the photos is to show you. I'm not saying, we don't wanna exclude anybody, but.
Don't worry, the old dude over here can take off any day if I have to and chase the balloons around.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, it's a Saturday, so members of the public can see it if they're interested, and this, there is a neighborhood around here. But if you wanna propose a Saturday, a Saturday, a Saturday, and then in the event, after three Saturdays it's not held, then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I mean, we can do something, I wanna give opportunity to have it held on a, on a weekend. But we understand the time constraints and weather constraints.
Definitely weather constraints.
Propose something, and we'll review it.
I will propose something.
Anything else?
So do we, um, so you, you guys are okay with us, uh, working to schedule a balloon test now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I'd like to get the receptor points done as soon as possible, because, I mean, we actually have a pretty big window here. It doesn't usually snow till after Thanksgiving, although we've had crazy, ten years ago, we had three feet of snow on Halloween, if you remember. And then eight was on Thanksgiving, so you never know, but, um, presumably, we should be able to get this going.
So then let's put it on for two weeks, so you guys can at least approve the receptor sites?
No problem, we'll schedule that.
Even if they haven't made a resubmission?
And I have the contract here from Mr. Johnson, making a motion to hire Phil Johnson as RF engineer for the Verizon Wireless Tower Review with the applicant supplying initial escrow of three thousand five hundred, and to authorize the chairman to sign his contract.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, and we look forward to working with you on this.
Same here, as always.
And of course, I really was sort of teasing about the seeker on just the contract. I understand why you did it, um, I think generally speaking, we would just have the town supervisor sign it, um, as, as the applicant in the time being, but if you don't, if you feel like, if you feel nervous about, what you just said about a town board later on saying, we're not gonna sign it now, made me like go, ugh, because you went through all the work with the planning board, and they approved it? And then the town board decided not to, to take the revenue stream after all?
We, we got it done, but we had to do some extra stuff, and, and it's like, it's between, between me, you, the four walls, and whoever's listening, it's just bad faith. And so we don't, we don't really, we don't appreciate that. You know, that's just, if you can't, you can have a contract with somebody, but if you can't trust them, it doesn't, doesn't help, so anyway. It's happened a few times.
I was just part of a negotiation on a lawsuit, and the insurance, the insurance representative made it very clear that even though the rest of my board, this is a different board, was like, no, we're gonna send a message, and we want justice, so don't do it. And he said, I'm not interested in justice, I'm interested in saving money. He said, if you can't negotiate in good faith, then we're just done, I'm like, uh, okay, we'll, we'll negotiate in good faith. So we did, and there were no theatrics based on that, so. But yeah, you can't have bad-faith negotiations, 'cause there's no trust there.
No, that's not negotiable.
That was, that was one of the reasons why we do that, and that we will always continue to do it.
I fully understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't surprise me also, because they can be controversial.
Exactly, so they get a little nervous.
So you get a whole bunch of people in a neighborhood coming out, and so then the town board doesn't wanna move forward on something that they've had all this opposition to.
And we spend tens and tens of thousands of dollars, and then we have no, nothing to show for it, there's nothing in writing, so.
Thank you for elucidating the details for us, though.
Happy to.
Have a safe drive back.
Thank you very much, and until next time.
Two weeks.
Oh, we'll be back in two weeks?
Yeah.
To discuss receptor sites?
Okay, that's fine.
So we can all agree on them, you don't have to be here.
No, no, I, uh, that's.
We'll probably, we can send those to you just in advance.
No, I'm just thinking, I don't know if I'll have a response to Bonnie, your questions, I mean, certainly we'll try.
I think it's mostly for the receptor sites.
Yeah, this is just for the receptor sites. I was gonna say, you have to be here, but I wanted, I want us to have our discussions about receptor sites, for anybody here to also suggest them, send to Bonnie, that Bonnie will collate, create a list, based on your list, as well as what the other comments are.
Okay.
And then in two weeks, we can just go ahead and formally not adopt them, but that'll be what we're gonna use.
Yeah, and it actually would be useful even at that meeting, if people, because you're looking at tall towers and you're thinking about visibility, if there's other co-location sites that you think about while you're out in the field, that we should bring to their attention, we could talk about that, too, probably.
I know that area, I don't think there's anything else that's.
Not much.
Not a hundred and fifty, fifty-nine feet, whatever it is, the total height. There's nothing that tall in that area. Thank heavens. Any rate.
Okay.
Good to see you again.
Thank you, same here.
The next item on the agenda is finally, the Enclave at Hyde Park. This is the, we've extended their special use permit and site plan approvals. One of the requirements is that they update the bonds. We had, um, with Mrs. Zataro, review all the numbers as, that were supplied by LRC, this is for the water and sewer, and for the improvements to the road as well, the water and sewer plan, I should say. Mr. Casamento sent it back to the applicant, who tried to make some changes, and Pete stuck with the numbers that he had, so this is where we're going, and Mr. Casamento said, that's fine. Um, they're not here tonight, so if you have any questions for the amounts, they would be directed to Pete. Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, I gave this really long resolution, sorry.
It's not that bad. Resolution to grant two-year extension of time to complete construction, and to recommend amount of financial security to the enclave, formerly known as the Meadows. Resolution number sixteen dash forty-nine oh. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the planning board grants the applicant a two-year extension of the time to start substantial construction of the project to June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and the time to complete construction of the project to June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved, that the planning board hereby accepts the following updated estimates for financial security for infrastructure costs to be provided by the applicant. One, wastewater plant in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars. Two, water plant in the amount of sixty-seven-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Three, road construction, including associated storm drainage, in the amount of five-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred. Be it further resolved, that the planning board recommends to the town board that it accept financial security in said amounts, subject to approval as to form and substance by the attorney of the town. Be it further resolved, that upon completion of the wastewater treatment system, and prior to the zoning administrator, administrator authorizing a building permit for the first dwelling unit, the applicant shall post a maintenance bond or letter of credit with the town pursuant to section one nineteen of the Transportation Corporation law, in an amount to be determined by the town engineer.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Are you the top-tier people? Come on up. You've been waiting very patiently, and I'll be honest, you didn't need to show up, we're gonna pass this, so.
We wanted to introduce ourselves.
I'm glad, speaking to, sit down, speaking to the microphone, say, tell us your names.
How's the owner? My name's Greg. Sorry, uh, my name's Greg Gaddis, my partner, James Clark. Um, we are just a family-owned automotive repair shop, offer full-service auto repair and towing.
Say that again slower into the microphone.
People actually.
People watch this show.
Oh, okay, I'm watching.
I'm trying to get you, I'm trying to, yes, I'm trying to get you. And you'll be, you'll be shown until, for another two weeks, on a loop every day.
Really?
Yes, so people, we want people to know about new businesses coming into town.
Understood, all right, well, again, my name is Greg, it's my partner, James. Um, we own Top Tier Automotive, it's located on Violet Avenue, uh, right in the corner of West Dorsey, there at the intersection. Um, we offer full-service auto repair and towing.
Thank you.
Nice.
Um, do you already have another business located elsewhere?
No.
No.
Thank you for opening your business in Hyde Park.
Thank you for having us.
No, everybody would like to say that up here, I promise you. We appreciate new business coming into town, so, and we're happy to pass the resolution tonight. Oh, actually, I'm introducing this resolution. I really am happy to welcome you to town. Resolution recommendation for issuance of signed permits pursuant to Town Code section one oh eight dash two four point three A four D. Top Tier Automotive wall sign. This is resolution twenty, twenty-two dash fifty-five, November twelfth, second, twenty twenty-two. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, that the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator to issue the signed permit for Top Tier Automotive, as requested in the application received, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Got your sign. And good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is Hyde Park Town Center North, this is for building number two that's under construction. Interestingly today, I believe that Ms. Moss told me that it's ready for a walkthrough, Tad?
Yes.
They're ready to, they're already ready to CO it? They're giving it CO?
That might be turned off.
Ah.
They've had a preliminary walkthrough, uh, by Donald Westmeyer and myself, and we're going back out on Tuesday.
Oh.
I believe they hope to have it, so that the machines can be moved into the building after Election Day closes down. So, um, you know, they're moving fast, they have additional crews, they have blocked traffic, so that they can have a lot of people in there working all at once, and we are, we have had a couple of complaints about that, but hopefully, you know, we explain that it's a temporary situation, and that they're moving very fast. They do have a lot to do, but the certifications are coming in, so.
That's great to hear.
We're, we're hopeful.
That's great to hear.
The, uh, rock wall was not taken from the existing rock wall, but the rock does match.
Oh, nice.
Uh, the concrete was dug out underneath where the planter will be. The brick that came off of the building that was providing the little tiny articulation has been replaced, and the new cladding is going to meet up flush, so there's not gonna be an articulation at that location.
Okay.
So when, you know, we can, we can talk about that, but when the ASBilt comes in, we may have to go through, uh, an acceptance of the ASBilt.
Just for the rest of the board, um, I was told that when they first started demoing parts of it, the brick just fell off.
It fell off. It fell off in big pieces.
Well, you could see it on the, uh, north side.
They had to repair some things associated with the Feeds Plus building. Uh, they've had to change some drainage when they took that connecting structure off between, uh, the roof drain from Feeds Plus drained into a low spot, and it actually flows into the building. So they had to put a, a drain, an inlet, and then they're connecting it out to another storm drain.
Better to find that now.
Better to find it now, yeah.
Wow.
That's expensive equipment that goes in that building.
The electrical connection is amazing.
That's what I was telling you, it's really high-tech stuff in there, 'cause they have to test that equipment all the time.
The, the whole electrical room is.
It's a big deal.
It.
And by the way, this is a huge upgrade from where the warehouse has been all this time to this, because, again, the old warehouse, they just had those old machines where you, you know, click, 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 bang, bang. Um, they, they haven't had the facilities to lead to the upkeep that's required for these, 'cause, like, I voted today early, and, you know, they print your ballot out, because I'm from Hyde Park, wherever you want to come into county, it's an automatic printout, so all that stuff really does need more, I said again, sort of high-tech, but, but equipment to keep it going, so. Thank you for giving us an update on that.
Yeah, thank you.
John, I believe you have this resolution, this is to grant discretionary bonus to increase the maximum size of a symbol, as well as to grant permission for the, permission to have to get the sign.
Resolution granting discretionary bonus to increase maximum size of a letter, symbol, or graphic pursuant to Town Code section one oh eight dash twenty-four dot two F two. Dutch County Board of Elections Training Center, Building Two, Hyde Park Town Center, resolution two zero two two dash fifty-six. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved, that the board makes the following findings to permit a maximum symbol of twenty-one inches for the proposed Dutch County symbol. The additional size of the symbol is appropriate, given its relationship to the size of the building, and the increase in size for the symbol is appropriate, due to the distance of the wall sign from the site entrance. Be it resolved, further resolved, that the board hereby grants the applicant requested relaxation of the standard symbol size from ten inches to twenty-one inches to Dutch County symbol as part of wall sign, and is approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-five feet from the primary access on Route Nine. And be it further resolved, the planning board recommends the issuance of the signed permit for the wall sign for Dutch County Board of Elections by the zoning administrator.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries as well. The next is also for Hyde Park Town Center South. Um, this is to amend the site plan, so that we have a change of tenancy. There were two suites, um, one was Howard Minster's veterinary program, and we don't know who this is going to be, because they're not proposing any signage yet, et cetera, but they need to start working apparently to combine, to take out, I guess, the dividing wall between Suites Two and Three to move forward. Anybody have any questions on this? This is primarily internal, Tad, but it did note in the payment that there, or the request, that there would be minor site plan modifications coming afterwards, so I am taking it that means a change in the door, windows, something like that, okay. That was my only question, and, um, and this is Rob's resolution.
Resolution to grant site plan amendment approval, Hyde Park Town Center, Park Plaza. Change in tenancy of Suite Three from medical veterinary into commercial retail, and to combine Suites Two and Three. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fifty-seven. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, that the planning board hereby approves the amended site plan drawing submitted May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and authorizes the secretary to include the project request into the file after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, submittal of an updated parking analysis table reflecting, uh, suite numbering and square footage of Building One E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it's, you're right, the parking tables are calculated by each use, so we do need to have an updated one, because the medical use is different than the business use to an extent. Yep, I see you nodding, so, correct, okay, good, good, good catch there, Tad. The last item on our agenda is, we usually adopt our meeting dates next year. As you note, April fifth is the start of Passover? Pesach? And July fifth is the day after July fourth, so if somebody, if anybody wants to take a July fourth vacation, then they would have to come back that morning. Um, so we could, we can delete these if you guys want, and if we need to, we can always set a special meeting to substitute for them. But I need to get feedback from you guys as to what you want.
I think it's reasonable to, uh, not have those meetings those days.
Great.
I'll make a motion to set the planning board meeting schedule.
You actually have to abstain, I'm afraid to tell you, because even though I think you'll be reappointed, you're the only person who's not guaranteed to be here, the rest of us all can.
Fair enough.
All are.
Then I would like to make the motion.
Thank you, Ann.
To, uh, adopt the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions?
Yes, Chris, otherwise.
We're okay. So that brings us to the end of the meeting, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, thank you to the town board for providing the resources to televise this event, and thank you, colleagues and consultants.